I read the script. I say budget, I say everything.
Thanks Greg.
Yeah. It's just damn. You know, more so than that. I'll get all these.
What?
Huh?
What?
Greg, I'm sorry.
I knew that, but I wouldn't let go of it.
I'm a little slapped.
That was the second headline in two weeks.
Great oxygen, those are yours.
I know, but I mean still. And I hate that, and it is, when you don't have control.
Sorry, you're bombing by the way.
Yeah, that's what she said.
Okay, I knew I was here for something.
I was gonna say, I think I actually printed the second to last final revision. I think something else was added too. Yeah. Three times changed. I was like, okay, it's past that 24 hour mark. Is it? Oh, okay.
Welcome back.
How are you all doing?
Good, you?
Good.
It's like it's signed.
No, we didn't sign that. That's handwritten in there, it's gotta be changed. I'll take it. That way I got something to throw at people.
Wow.
Tough crowd, man.
Yeah, we need to give them a Nerf ball or something.
Cold weather makes me grumpy.
I like this cold weather, I'm in heaven, man.
I would think it'd make you...
You're gonna get a stapler going at you.
I would think it'd make you a little bit pleasant.
No.
All your deer hunting you get to do and everything.
I can deer hunt in nice weather.
I still find deer hunting's 100 degrees.
Forty, 45 degrees would be nice.
Oh, fair weather. There you go.
Kinda like Kansas City sheep's fans. Fair weather fans, when they're doing good, they're doing good. They're doing bad, doing bad. Wouldn't know.
Not too sad.
I'm an all-weather cowboy fan. Takes good into bad. I just wanted to punch out.
We all ready, guys?
Think so.
Okay, we're gonna call the commission order. Do we have any minutes reports?
I have the treasures monthly report filed with us.
Commission committee liaison reports, announcements, upcoming meetings and/or events. Silence. Well, I like it.
Board Realtors today, Board Realtors Directors tomorrow, camp tomorrow.
Presiding Commissioner caucus in Ralla tomorrow. Boy Scout meeting on Thursday. New doctor reception at Central for the Central Bank Financial Center Thursday.
Chamber Connections Thursday.
Next week's MAC. You guys going?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Chamber board meeting on Tuesday. Prayer breakfast Wednesday. Do we not have a meeting next week?
No, we don't, we don't, and that's meeting is not to the fore. I would like to ask you about the second weekend this summer.
Okay, we'll get to that. All right, first on our agenda is bid award 2014-34 Works Compensation Insurance.
You guys should have this before you. Basically, we received two bids based on the same payroll numbers. The lowest premium was submitted by Wall Street through Missouri Employers Mutual at $225,421. And that also has potential for dividends, whereas the other one did not mention that.
Okay, any questions?
I haven't had to look at that yet.
Looks like it's regular insurance and it's just a better premium, right? There's not any difference in the coverage?
It's currently the same.
Apples to apples?
MEM that we have now. Actually, compared to last year, it is 8% less.
That's correct.
Yeah.
To save $18,000 too.
Where were the other bids at?
Where were the other bids at? They were actually 8.8% higher than the current one that was given.
Did we get a bid from MAC Trust?
Yeah, it's on here. 243, 640, $18,000 more.
We only received the two bids.
Only got two?
Right. Here's the actual pricing pages on both of them. And aside from the adjustments, that's all in front of you too.
There's no multipliers or anything on any of that?
From the adjustments. I guess all the prices per category of types of jobs that we have.
Right.
And then they all have, they go onto a lot of adjustments versus Missouri Association account. Today we have a few. Some are a little higher, some are a little lower on actual rates per category.
And just by historical reference, we used to be with the MAC Trust. Their rates just kept getting higher and higher. And five years ago Debbie, six years ago, we decided to price it out. And I think for the first year, we saved $80,000 was the difference in the rates. And we've consistently stayed with MEM. They've also offered some, they did some in-service training, in-safety training, things like that.
I think from Bruce, I don't know if you guys just took advantage of that safety card class MEM put on Columbia and stuff.
Well, they are very proactive, they've just taken advantage of it.
So, is this just an estimate and then did they adjust it?
That's right. We gave them an estimate in the RFP of what our payroll was, what we think it's going to be. And then they come back at the end of the year and they audit me.
Right.
And then they either charge us a premium for what we missed, or they give us a refund on the premium we paid. So, in comparing apples to apples, we, they both compared the same totals of payroll.
Do you ever get a refund, or do you ever have to pay?
No, I'm always, I'm always getting a refund. I never know what overtime's gonna be at Public Works and/or the Sheriff. And you pay, you don't actually have to pay on that rate, so.
All right, any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve the bid with Wall Street Insurance/Missouri Employers Mutual.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is bid award 2014-35 IV infusion pumps.
Unbeknownst to us, whenever we started this, it's actually ended up being sole source because of different versions that are put out. At the end of the day, we got a bid from Baxter Healthcare, so the cost for five of these is $15,000, and then the prices are broken out on your spreadsheet.
We have this in the budget. Something we went through and talked about before.
Correct.
I'm gonna send the next year's budget in.
Yeah, the only thing we have to add to that is the release date for these pumps are not until Q1 of 2015. It was approved for 2014, but I'm requesting to carry that over into 2015 to cover the release date, if that makes sense.
So, we should go ahead and approve the award, but we won't actually pay it till next year.
They're taking pre-orders, but delivery won't be till Q1 2015.
And the reason why we're doing it is they have an updated newer version that, like I say, is not gonna be released until Q1 of 2015. And we're just taking advantage of that newest version, so we're ahead of the technology curve, staying ahead.
And we can actually put a purchase order out there within the system.
You're gonna be buying the same amount next year, right?
Yes, five this year and then five in one year, yes. We're phasing it in as we are the cardiac ones.
So really, it won't be a phase because they're all coming next year?
Well...
Well, we had set it up to phase it in, just we didn't know that the new version was gonna come out, as I recall.
Correct.
Because I thought we had approved it. I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I entertain a motion to approve a bid of $15,000 for Fives IV infusion pumps with Baxter Healthcare.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. 2014-36 bid for generator transfer switch replacement.
Okay, we received three bids in response to this, the lowest of which was Stokes Electric. I know that the Public Works guys met with them, and I think that everything's on the up and up, and they're good to proceed for the $15,496. They all bid the exact same transfer switch, so most of the cost difference is just in the labor itself, the removal and installation, as you can see.
So I don't really have a question on the bid, but when Jennifer was putting this out there, my question was, is we looked at something similar at Pringer here last year, and the price was like $30,000. We were thinking it was gonna be 25 or something, and Greg, I don't totally remember, but I'm just wondering what we're doing. I mean, are we replacing a whole switch?
We're replacing switches. What happened is when they originally installed the generator, the switches that were installed were fitted for outside.
They were fitted for outside, but I think they somehow know they have all the moisture inside. And then between times, that's the actual switch inside of the box inside, I think it's gotten corroded, yeah, that they finally have failed. But we are, this is the complete switch. This is the new box, new switch, new transfer, new, everything that goes with those switches will be new in these. And this is for two of these. One for, we have one on our main building and one on our operation, another building on the other side. There's a new switch for both of those, and then the installation then started from the Cummins group, which is the ones who are actually doing our daily, our yearly maintenance on our generator. Switches are from there.
So this would be just like if we were installing one brand new?
Actually, it'd be two of them.
So we're installing two switches. At Pringer, we're gonna install one, and it's gonna cost us twice as much. Right.
Yeah, I believe so.
I think the last one from Pringer was, yeah, $25,000, $26,000. And I don't know.
I did look at the ones you're talking about though. Jennifer and I had talked about this a little bit earlier. She had kinda said some of their work. If you look at the one at Pringer, they weren't just putting in a transfer switch, they're actually switching out almost half of their electrical gear in that building in order to accommodate the switch, from what I can read out, what they actually printed out. Those are big, their big main record boxes, that all had to be changed. There were several things that had to get changed besides just the switch.
They had upgraded several things.
I don't have a problem with this. I mean, I'm just, here we get three bids for electric work on the switch. And so, when we did Pringer, we got one bid, and it was exorbitant. And if, you know, if we could've somehow tied these together, now we got a pretty decent package. But now we've already bid this, and I don't know if there's a way to maybe see if Stokes won't look at that, give us a price on that too, but if we're gonna award it to Stokes, but...
Maybe now's the time to go back out again on the Pringer. I mean, it's just depends on what the vendors get.
Actually, with the Pringer, that's a pretty extensive amount of work what they're doing. What I've looked at, what I've seen, what she had and what they actually have sent back in that they're doing on it, they're, they are actually doing a considerable amount of work on the actual electrical system that's in the building now, change it out in order to make this transfer switch, that they're putting in all the work. It's, it's pretty extensive. Probably have half that building down at a time, just no electric in it at all, just to transfer all this stuff over that they're changing. It's a pretty big deal.
So, why isn't yours such a big deal?
Because ours are just the switches on the outside, the actual, our actual gear in the building.
Yeah.
All stays can put place where it's at. Basically, all they're doing is like taking a smaller version of a light switch, basically. It's setting in one spot, wired real there, they take the switch out, put the new switch in, just wire it back up right in the same spot, so there's not really any transfer of any gear inside of the building being done. With Pringer, there's a lot actually done inside. But what I seen of the bid anyway, that she had shown me, when we originally did this one, I talked to her and we had looked at that one, and I said that probably the reason why that bid was a lot more than...
You guys have already been wired for a generator, you've already had one.
Yes, yes.
J, Juvenal's never been wired for one, never has had one.
That's all it is. A lot of different...
So, I'm gonna ask you, since you seem to know a lot about it. Well, I mean, and I've asked this before too. At Pringer, why can't we just install the switch and kill half the power on the inside?
I don't have enough questions for that part of it. I haven't looked at that far. All I know is that they're, like what your fuse panel would be in your house?
Right.
At Pringer, they're actually replacing some of those.
Why?
Panel, I don't know why.
I mean, when I think about a switch, I think about taking power from Ameren, killing that, and powering it from a generator. And if that generator doesn't power enough, then I start throwing breakers on the inside, and we only use what we need to use. I mean, this is temporary power.
They'd have something different, because if they had the generator running, it would allow power from the generator to essentially go back towards Ameren's.
But that's what the switch does, right?
Not the way they explain it. I don't remember exactly, but I do remember there was something more entailed with it, and it was more extensive, like I said, than just switching out the switches, so.
So, can I, can I? I've now gotten completely lost here. I thought we were awarding a bid on two switches at Public Works. And now all we're talking about is the Pringer Center. Do we need to reject this bid then, and shut it all down and start over? Or do we need to accept this bid and then have another meeting where we get into the weeds on the Pringer Center and try to figure that out? So I'm kinda confused.
We already awarded Pringer, didn't we?
No, we rejected it.
Twice, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I'm wondering if...
I don't know, I mean, it just, you know, when I saw this come out for bid, I was just like, well, you know, this is the same thing that we're doing at Pringer, and why didn't we just lump all these together and see what kind of a number we could get? And maybe, maybe I'm totally off base, but...
Our, Chris, we had, well, this worked on when we installed the generator. A lot of what you all, for doing the Pringer, was installed with the generator at our shop. All we're, we're at that point now, we've had all that work done. All we're doing is pulling that one switch out and installing a new switch into it. We had a lot of work, we had our old facility down for a while. We did it on a weekend where we could shut everything down, and then installed what we need to install.
I understand where you're coming from, but where I'm coming from is that we put out RFPs all the time, and we get one bidder that throws us a number that, here, if you want it, great, if not, no big deal, you know, I just made 20 grand, because the county's stupid, and...
No, that's why we can reject bids.
Well, I realize that, but I mean...
We only get one person bid to carpet, right?
One person.
And if we don't like them bids, we can, we can kick it out and say we don't think it's fair, so. I mean, we do have a say in the bids. If we think we're getting gigged, we can tell them, piss off. So, I mean, that's why we kinda rely on Jen to do as a purchasing agent.
Right.
So, but I see where you're coming from. If we can, if we're gonna do the one at Pringer Center, let's throw it together as a package and try to save some money. That's the kinda bottom line, right?
Right.
Is Pringer Center needing to be done? When's this need to be done?
So it's a next year item?
So we're this, move on.
Okay, now I entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Bid number 2014-37 Medical Grade Oxygen.
We got two bids for this from Airgas and Praxair. In the event that we do need to rent cylinders, Airgas offered lower prices. Also, their cost of the product itself is lower. Same thing for emergency trip charge. Praxair has a $300 charge, Airgas has none. The recommendation is for Airgas.
Seems like a no-brainer here. Any problems?
No brainer. I mean, it's, you look at the numbers, it's very easy to make a decision based off that. And both companies are reputable, and neither one, so...
Current provider?
Say yes, sir.
Current provider?
Praxair.
Any problems with, any problems with the switch out or anything?
No, other than the, just our own, the cylinders, you know, trying to appropriately keep track of that, no. I mean, even if we have to rent some, the cost is, as you can see there, is negligible, so, yeah, no problem. I appreciate it.
Okay, I entertain a motion to award the bid to Airgas.
So I moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Next is 2014-38 Carpet Replacement.
So I love that we only got one bid on this one, but we did.
But I do wanna state, they were calling around trying to get other people to bid on.
Why will nobody bid?
I don't know. We had, I had at least two confirmed for the pre-bid, and then I touched base with the third one, kind of in the last minute, and, you know, I don't know why people don't show up. They have the Cole County website, the purchasing website, they can literally take a minute and then get email notification every time. I don't know. I don't know the answer.
How fast do they have to have these bids?
They have, from the time it first goes out, like a month, over, over 30 days, yeah.
I don't know either.
Well, I think we need to do the auditor's office, which is less than the bid amount even. It's only 1,600 bucks. After that, it starts, I'm shocked at how fast the prices go up.
Are these, are these prices in line? I mean, are they close to the square yard, or, I mean, I have no idea on carpet. You have any idea, Greg?
Carpet prices that I've seen, what the state has been buying versus what we're buying is pretty similar. Labor is standard.
Can't be standard's prevailing wage. We're gonna get gig there, so. I mean, that's why it goes up so much more than doing your own house or your own office. You don't have to pay prevailing wage. Carpet's gonna be the carpet. I talked to Darryl about it, because he was the only one. And said, you know, he says he's not gonna try to gig us. I was like, well, that's fine, if you do, we just reject it, so wasn't worried about it. But we did talk about it. It is material plus prevailing wage, shoots it up fast. I think part of it is you gotta work around us, or other installments.
Just include moving furniture and everything? So basically, they show up, they do it all?
Correct.
So these squares go underneath everything, file cabinets and everything?
Yep, they move everything, lay it, put it back.
Is all this carpet squares?
Everything's carpet squares, except for the auditor, she's requested regular carpet. And Larry downstairs has requested regular carpet. Which that also adds a little bit to price, because you gotta move everything out of the way.
What's the price difference between carpet itself? Because we were looking at the squares, because if you get one spot, kinda like our spot out there...
Yeah, I don't know why we wouldn't just do squares everywhere. I'm confused why we...
Well, I don't know that, but I did talk to Darryl about that. These are bid, the two-by-two squares, and basically, the cost difference, the roll of carpet is cheaper, but the labor is gonna be more, because you have to move everything out at once. And I said, is that about a wash? He said, pretty much. So there might be a little cost difference, but...
But if we ever have a spot that gets coffee spilled on it or whatever, we can pull up a square, replace it, and be done.
I would, I would prefer just to do carpet squares and be done, because it gives you, with the replacement squares, you buy a few boxes of it, you always have matching carpet, you got a solution if you need it. And then Greg can fix it. I mean, it's just pulling up a couple squares and re-adhesive them. But the real question is, how much, to what extent do we wanna do the project? I mean, the dollars get really big really quick.
And you had to ask the other departments if they wanted to, if we would bid it, and if they wanted it, they would have to pitch in their own money.
Has anybody agreed?
I've not approached anybody yet, so that's what I was wondering. If you wanted a memorandum of understanding signed by these departments, I know Larry Vincent will pay for his, he's already told me that, but I'd like still a memorandum. You guys entered into the contract with this vendor, and then we enter into a contract with Larry to pay us back.
How long are these bids good for? Have we just opened them?
He did, he, yeah, we just opened them Friday.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we put this on the next agenda? Go talk to the various elected officials, see who wants to, who's willing to pay for it. Then we can come back, and we can go through this and make a decision.
And I have a question about that. Are we gonna entertain, are we all gonna do one color? Are we gonna entertain?
Yes. We're going uniform, because that's why we can get six replacement boxes and have them work anywhere.
Can I have a sample?
That's probably not a bad idea.
There's probably 6,000 different samples you can get.
Well, and people's personal preferences are gonna be different, and I just know that that'll come up, that someone...
I say we pick.
We pick, although we're certainly happy to take input, but we're gonna pick one color. We just can't pick four colors. I mean, that makes no sense. I mean, all right, put it on the next agenda. Debbie, if you don't mind, reaching out to the elected officials and seeing who wants new carpeting. Greg, get us three or four color option squares that we can lay down.
Larry Vincent has the book, wants to give it to you, so...
Whatever it is. Bring it up here, we'll put it on, what's our next meeting? On December 4th, and we'll make decisions then. Okey-dokey? Okay. Next item on the agenda, 2014-39 Interior Painting.
We received two bids in response to this. We had four show up at the pre-bid. I'm not sure what happened to the other two. You can see, if we, if we did everything, that this Hartland finishes is lowest. If you do, I don't know what anyone will pick to be done. There are situations where rainbow painting may be the lowest, so it kinda depends. I wasn't sure what all we were looking at actually doing. I did call references on that Hartland finishes. They all turned out good. So, I called Waveco and, I wrote it down, GBH Builders.
Yeah, it is kind of a hodgepodge, isn't it? You know, which one you do. Well, I think this probably needs to go along with the discussion we're having with carpet, and see if anybody else wants to pay to have their offices painted.
Well, then if we do that, would, which number would I be presenting to them? You know what I'm saying?
Can we pick and choose the lowest of each one?
Well, that's my question. I guess we could. Do we wanna have...
Was that what the bid was written?
It was, when they asked in there, and I said that I, we said we were not sure how it would be awarded. It could potentially be to multiple... It could potentially be to multiple, it would potentially be to one, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'd have to refer to do that.
I agree.
I mean, same with the carpet, the auditor's office is gonna need to be done.
Okay.
We can wait and we can do that next week.
Let's do it on December fourth, talk to the individual, um, elected officials to see who wants to pay to have it done.
Haven't been down to the collector's office.
I'd like to get it all, I'd like to just resolve these two issues in one shot and go. 'Cause we know we have to do the auditor's office.
No.
We know we have to do that.
That was not...
Yes, sir, Marvin.
Uh, if we're gonna do that, where you're gonna ask us to pay for it, or, or put money in, I think it would be sufficient that the commissioners pay fifty percent and we'll pay fifty percent. I think that would be, uh, uh, the way it should be done, because it is your building and all that.
I wouldn't, I'll be honest, I wouldn't object to that. I think that's a relatively fair compromise in the fact that it is our space overall.
I'm not gonna say I'm leaning either which way, but if we're gonna do the facilities and we're in charge of taking care of the facilities, maybe we should just pay for it and be done with it. Or we can entertain a fifty-fifty or whatever. If we're picking and choosing offices...
I would entertain the fifty-fifty with you, but, uh, I already know what the price is, and, uh, I just can't see me paying, or the next clerk paying the full amount, because it is your building, and we are, we, we basically work out of this building, and in the twelve years that I've been here, this building has not been touched, so I think that the commissioners ought to pay at least fifty percent. And if the elec- elected officials wanna chip in fifty percent, I think they should.
I don't have any objection, I don't have any objection to that, Marvin, I think that's...
I think it, I think it's a fifty-fifty deal is my, is what I think it should be. And I'll go fifty-fifty with you. Real quick, you won't even have to come and ask me. I'll tell you that right now.
Thanks, Marvin.
But I will do that. In the end, it's taxpayer money anyway, so...
It is.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, Marvin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, then we'll put this one on December fourth. Acceptance assault bid.
Gotta open that one up. Anything?
Yeah, no, there wasn't really a bid out.
There's no attachment to this one, they're hiding it from that one.
This is kinda a...
That's never a good thing, Larry.
Larry.
Yeah, you did. They gave, they gave us that warning about how bad it was gonna be.
Well, it's just basically accepting the piggyback deal that, to the city and MODOT.
Right.
So it's still at a hundred and six?
Yeah, these are the new prices.
That was what, sixty-eight?
These are the new prices?
And we only got one bid again?
Just one bid.
So we, if we have...
We're trying to solve, so actually what we need is just accept all of it.
It is what it is, we gotta have it.
Sucks.
I can buy a cheaper one.
Where'd you get that?
Okay, so, so my question would be this. I, and I'm, I'm gonna steal what you're commenting.
That's fine.
I mean, Chris says he can get a cheaper one. Why, why are we paying a higher premium then? Is that because they know we're, we have big pockets and they're gonna stick it to the local governments?
How many ton are you getting?
Well, I'm only buying fifty, but, I mean, but I would think if you buy more, it'd be cheaper.
Yeah, I would think that, I mean, that logically makes sense.
But they don't have the demand for thirty-five-hundred ton. If you came in there and said thirty-five-hundred ton, they'd probably be like, I can't get it for you. But I'd be curious, I'd be curious to hear if they could.
Are you getting bulked on, or...
Yeah, bulk.
I, I don't know.
I mean, I just, I mean, it seems odd to me too. I mean, I, I just, I don't know why it is, but I...
Can you get us forty-five-hundred?
Probably not. Probably not, if I could, I'd, uh, buy it and I'd, and I'd make ten dollars a ton on it.
So when they haul that salt, they gotta charge us prevailing wage to haul it, and... Yeah, so they gotta charge us for the prevailing wage on that stuff too, and there you go again.
No, no, there's no prevailing wage.
There's no prevailing wage on trucking.
On trucking it, there's not?
No.
Okay, I figured we was getting gigged on that too.
There would be if we had them lay it on the roads. Then it would be prevailing wage.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just kind of an, it's kind of an oddity, but I mean, it's supply and demand, so...
We kept with all of the MODOT licenses were the same, they bid separate, just the city and us. You know, the prices, it's comparable to the area. Now, if you get another part of the state, I think Springfield pays considerably less, but, uh, why that is, I don't know. Ours is coming, this is coming from Chile or Venezuela.
When they gonna deliver it by? My question is, when will they deliver it by? I mean, I've heard that some of the stuff's backed way up too, that you could order it now and you may get it in July. It didn't help us a whole lot.
Well, that's why, once we get this done today, we're gonna call about it, and see when we get delivery. We're gonna try to get a thousand tons right now, so...
We're, we're gonna play that market there. We've heard the same thing, Mark, is we're gonna order and just see, you know, that's gonna have a big impact.
I mean, we gotta have the salt, it's, I mean, that's what sucks, is we gotta have the salt, and they know it, and they're gonna take advantage of us, there's no other options. I entertain a motion to accept the salt bid.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the council payable review. I entertain a motion to approve council payable.
Uh, Jeff, I pulled yours out.
Okay, I was saying...
I entertain a motion...
So moved. Oops.
Uh, I will second it. We'll include that in it, and then we'll do, we don't have to vote.
Okay, that's fine.
So I have motion, a second, and discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Uh, for the record, that showed Jeff abstain. Council payable review is approved. GIS Day and Geography Awareness Week proclamation signing.
I have the proclamation. This is, uh, Geography Awareness Week, and tomorrow is GIS Day. And I just, I wanna thank the commission again for your support of our GIS program and all the kind of offices that use it, that support us also.
Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, call roll please.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, roll call votes approved, and Melissa? Give this back to you real quick. Thank you for what you do. I think we have a superlative GIS system, and that's ingr- almost exclusively because of the work you have done on it, and we are greatly, greatly thankful for that and very appreciative of it.
Great, appreciate it, thank you.
It's, uh, it's a real star that we have, so...
What are they doing to fly over?
Okay, um, that I will need to probably do another commission meeting for, 'cause we did get our, um, our bid...
More money.
For that, and we did choose a vendor, and it's gonna be really, really inexpensive compared to what we've done in the past.
Wow.
Less than thirty-five thousand to do the whole county, so...
That's unbelievable, that's, that's almost...
Mainly because of our ability to get the six counties together to do this, so...
That's a third of what it was last time, isn't it?
Uh, it was, I can't remember what it was last time.
I thought it was closer to ninety last time.
Yeah, it was like forty-something, wasn't it, four?
It might have been ninety with the city.
Maybe that's what it was.
And we changed it around.
So, and we're still working on trying to get some grants and some partners. We haven't had very much luck with the partners, but we're gonna send out another email. Hopefully, we can get some more partners, but anyway.
Awesome.
Alright.
Thank you very much, Melissa, appreciate what you do. Discussion of security at Health Department building.
Well, I'll kinda start, just give you a brief overview. Before, we talked about security at the Health Department. When I think Christie came, um, basically, they just have keys to get in. They do have an alarms on their medications to make sure the freezer or refrigerator doesn't go off and nobody's there. Then we also talked about putting like us, a system on there, like through the grid cams, which is basically an alarm system you turn on when you leave the building, and you turn off when you come in the morning. And then from that meeting, 'cause Greg had brought you some estimates on what that would cost, from there, um, then card access was being talked about and different things to that building. So Christie and, um, the sheriff were gonna go and figure out what that would cost and what that would entail doing. And the way I understand, you can't really work with what the sheriff has, so maybe I'll, I'll get the sheriff's...
It can't tie in with, with the company on the servers we have, they would need their own server.
Okay. And so to that, then we kinda went back to a standstill. So Greg had actually went to Tyler, locked the key, and got an estimate, and maybe you can explain what we have here.
Um, we got with Kevin, talked about putting access on the front door and the upper glass door, removing the hardware from the back service door to where you couldn't come or, or should not come back in that door. And that bid was seventy-one thou- or seventy-one hundred?
Yes.
Yep.
Do that.
So we got a bid. Is that key still, key access, or fob, card, what?
Card access, key fob.
The nice thing of that is you don't, you don't have to replace locks, 'cause you can kill the keys or the, or you can kill the fobs or the cards.
But that still does not, if somebody were to break in the middle of the night, that's not gonna tell you anything, or a building catches fire, it won't tell you anything either. Or is, you can do the security system for twelve hundred, that'll, that's gonna have motion detectors.
So what does this do? Just locks and unlocks the door?
Yep.
Well, hell, we got keys to do that right now. I think we need some kinda security out there. I didn't realize we didn't have any security whatsoever. We were talking about some doors being left open a while back, and sort of lost kinda surprised.
Well, one of the bids was twelve hundred bucks to tie in with the existing system, that also included four smoke detectors, so... Fire were to catch, catch on fire, like during the evening or a weekend when nobody's there, at least some, it would catch that and alert somebody.
But if somebody breaks in there, it's not gonna tell us anything right now.
With us, now, no.
Or with this here, it won't either.
No, but the bid I got from the previous time for twelve hundred, that included door contacts, motion detectors, and smoke alarms added to their existing system.
Add it to the system that they got, or...
Yeah, they could tie into that.
Twelve hundred dollars per...
No, that's, that's, twelve hundred dollars, that's, that's install cost.
One-time cost.
One-time cost.
Does that include the zoning that we talked about? 'Cause the refrigerator alarms have to stay on all day, they can't turn it off.
Right, that stays on, that's on, that's how they program it that way.
And do we, so do we have a security system out there, or do we...
Only the refrigerators.
What they're doing now is monitoring their two refrigerators, I believe.
It's vaccines.
And their, and their panic buttons they have right now.
Okay.
So they're on twenty-four hours, they accept they, the new system will type into this panel, and they can be turned on or off. Leaving the panic button still on, and leaving, um, the refrigerators, 'cause that's...
This new system, or the twelve hundred dollar system?
Not that twelve hundred.
Okay, I don't have the twelve hundred dollar system thing in front of me. Is that on here?
No, it's probably not.
I guess I'm confused as to why we wouldn't go with the twelve hundred dollar system that ties into it versus the seventy-one hundred dollar system that costs more and is not any kind of warning or any kind of system that tells us it's been broke into.
Two, two separate, two separate issues. And realistically, you should probably look at both of them.
So if we did the twelve hundred dollar system, what would be the monthly cost on the monitor?
Right now, it's, I think it's thirty or thirty-five, and it's staying the same.
I guess that was what was presented the last time, and then it just kinda got blown out into card swiping and did any kind of thing, so...
We need to bid it then, if we're, if we're gonna look at the whole, maybe we can bid all of it, bid one where it's tied in, one where it's the swipe cards, and one where it's both. Give us the options.
And to be quite honest, we talked about this with all the Sonatrol in all the buildings, and the camera system in the courthouse. In my mind, as soon as that camera system was done in the courthouse, the gentleman who did that, I was hoping to get him to look at all of our buildings, and maybe go away from Sonatrol, do our own monitoring, um, have our own system, and all of our buildings be the same. 'Cause they were all bid at different times. We've got ones on different doors everywhere that have different term contracts on, 'cause every time we added a security on the door, it was a new contract we had with Sonatrol.
Right, and it could all along to, uh, my clerk, it works twenty-four hours a day.
Well, I like these here, the, like you said, Greg, if somebody leaves, gets fired, disgruntled or whatever, you just undo their card and they're done. You can still lock the thing. And I do like that, and I, I don't, these prices, I think, are very reasonable, but we still have to bid it. Did y'all see these? That's the one tying it in, and that's the seventy-one hundred is changing it to the...
We got the seventy-one hundred right here.
Okay, you do have a copy of the bid today.
But I, I didn't have the twelve hundred.
That was the one from, one we talked about a year ago, on how we talked about it first time.
But it's over six thousand, we gotta, we gotta bid the, if we're gonna do this, we gotta bid it. And I, I'm like Jeff, I think that the, the system is a much better option, because it allows some security out there. I think it's, um, I don't think we can sole source it.
No.
So I think we probably need to get a bid put together on it and make a decision about it.
There's two different bids here.
So what you got, first one that's typed up from Tyler's, that I think you've got, Chris?
Those are just replacing lock cylinders.
We're going to the MECO security, where on the certain deep, we can get keys cut.
Right.
And written one is the prices I got from the gentleman over the phone, that currently has the warrant out there.
So we're talking about twelve hundred and twelve hundred?
Yeah.
You can still get, you can still get keys cut.
Yeah, so we prefer the key fobs over the regular keys.
They can be cut if they're not on the left.
You're right, they shouldn't, but it happens.
All time.
With the MECO keys.
Even with the magnetically impregnated keys, it work, it still gets copied.
The key card or the fob system is by far the best option, and no question of it.
The, the only other suggestion that I had when we were talking about is for the sake of the girls downstairs that are working, if you have their barricade, that, that, their desk area, if you have that, that lumbar coating put over the glass, it doesn't look any different, but if somebody goes crazy down there, they can't bust through it. And that's a fairly inexpensive fix, and Brady's big glass in town has some material.
Well, I think the first thing we gotta figure out is, I think we gotta go out and bid this. I don't think there's another option. I don't know, we can really make a decision until we bid it.
No, I'd like to...
I like, I think Tyler's does a great job, they're local, I much prefer to use a local, but it's over the amount, we just don't get a choice.
Yeah. Now, if they wanna do, or do the bids, like I said, separate, they can do the locks and keys and stuff, and then if, say, uh...
They wouldn't be locks.
If it's Grundin, nah, they'd be the fob locks and keys, whatever.
That's the seven thousand one, my father.
Right. Yeah, but if we're gonna do it, I think that makes sense to do that part too. But bid that, and then maybe Tyler's does that part of it, and if, uh, I don't know if Sonatrol's gonna bid it or not, but... Grundin does it, and he did this here, he did a good job on it.
Let's give it to, um, to Jennifer. Why don't you two work with Jennifer, put together the specs on it? Because part of it is having tied into a monitoring system. And I don't see that that ties it into a monitoring system.
And monitoring system not being ours at the count of being there somewhere.
I don't know.
Because that's what I was trying to get to, all of our buildings, have one monitoring system for all of our buildings.
I agree.
So I, if we did this, I'd like to maybe look at the other ones at the same time, but I am no professional, and Jennifer is not either. This would be a hard technical bid to put together.
And one consideration on that. You know, you know how that radio system on the panic buttons works in the courthouse? And that's, that's less expensive than the other bid, and there's no monthly on it. That same system could be done out there, and you can attach the other alarms to those systems. You can do intrusion alarms, panic alarms, the whole ball of that. And then come over coal main to us, and as this building does.
That's why I wanted to away from this monthly maintenance charges that we can't even get anybody here.
We can take that into consideration when we get the bids too, even if it costs a little more time, it's going to cost less in the long run, so.
Well, that system actually would be cheaper from the very, from the get-go, the hard, most expensive parts, the portable radio that goes in it.
So we might have to get some expertise on how to put that together, so.
Get with Jennifer. You guys work together, Greg, if you wouldn't mind helping them out a little bit.
If they've got the contact.
Donnie. But, but I think in the end, we got to come up with some kind of solution.
Yeah, if you have them bid it, bid it the way we put the specs out and if they've got a better way to do it, then have them essentially make their proposal as a, as an alternate bid.
As an alternate.
Yeah. Because if they see a better way for us to do it and save us money, then they don't have to sit here and do the specs the same way.
And I do want to bring in Juvenile to the picture because they paid about the highest monthly rate for Sonatrol for maintenance and they.
If we can bid them all at one time, kind of like we were talking this morning about the electric thing and save us money in the long run. Do them all at the same time, but you, if you want to go crazy with it, let's see if it's going to save us money. We do have to get something out there.
Sam, thoughts?
No, I, I agree, that's.
It's going to be your watch. That's going to, these bids aren't going to come in while I'm still here, so.
Chris and I, when I was over there, we were talking about that too, but, uh, I think if we.
As consistent that way across county, hit the county wide as much as possible, make it consistent. That's always a good thing.
Agreed. Okay. Christie, while you're here, real quick, person come off of monitoring today?
Uh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow? No problem so far? Good. Thank you very much. Thanks for keeping us up to the speed on these things too. MoDOT agreement Route J sign.
What we've got is an issue down in Osage City. Um, for whatever reason, the garments and other systems are taking people through Osage City to try to get to the correctional centers. We've met with MoDOT to see if we could put a sign up, um, at the intersection of Algoa Road and Route J.
They won't put a sign up.
They won't.
That's why we got to ask where, if we could put one up.
Right. And that's what this agreement is, is allowing us to put up a sign and we'll have to burn it up and maintain.
It's not the problems with the cars going down there.
It's the tractor trailers.
It tears up the road. I mean, the other people going down there are some sketchy types.
Well, the one, the one landowner said he's had several families that show up at his front door. That, you know, he's got young kids at home that he doesn't really, you know, kind of scares him a little bit, so.
That's part of it too.
And I also have Greg Reese at the city is trying, he put in a, a deal to Google. It may take up to a year to get it done.
Shot.
To get it changed on the, on the mapping systems. Like the gentleman showed us, he pulled it up, I don't remember if it was MapQuest or, I think it was Google. And it showed going in the back of the road that's actually fenced off in a gate cross, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think it's something we should get done. We solve one more problem out there.
Yep.
The cost is limited and.
Yeah.
So isn't, isn't Route J, isn't that MoDOT's?
That's MoDOT's, but they don't put up, with their cost cutting and everything else that they're doing, they don't put up the.
They'll put the initial sign on fifty off of the main highway, but they won't put another one off Route J. Directional signs essentially is what they were saying.
So once the tractor trailer gets on J, how are they going to turn around?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's why we're trying to.
You're going to divert them down Algoa before then.
We're trying to divert them, if they get on Route J, that they go down Algoa and not continue on Route J down into Osage City.
Yeah.
They can still get turned around if they cross the railroad tracks, as long as they don't try to make that corner where the GPS is taking them. But once they make that corner, there's no going back. And they have to get a tow truck.
We've seen with the truck drivers, we deal with them every winter, how some of these guys get their CDLs, I have no idea.
I entertain a motion. I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, agreement with MoDOT.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. Yes. Roll call vote, agreement with MoDOT's approved. Next item is business fifty change order approval.
This is the final, uh, number on the shot rock, or subgrade stabilization primarily using shot rock. When we ran into the problems early on in the project, we discussed with you all what our options were and we worked through several different things to keep the cost down. Uh, the, the main one, one was changing out the GeoGrid option with the shot rock option. The total amount is, of the change order is three hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars, forty-eight cents. Uh, we had a contingency built into the budget for the project, uh, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we added, a change order one was about eighty thousand dollars and that was mostly due to adding the Greenway work with Parks and Recreation. Uh, that money was paid in and I think Kristen's got a court order to take that money and put it back into this budget line item. But with that and then some other little odds and ends, I want to make sure we got enough money to get us to the end of the year to cover making our payments. And so the, where the budget transfer, the Debbie put together for a hundred thousand dollars, that would need to be approved along with this change order.
So are three and a half million dollar projects over by about a hundred thousand dollars?
Um, no, it's, uh, about ten percent, give or take. See, we had, it was three, three and a half million dollar was the original, little less was the original contract. Uh, we added the Greenway work for eighty, seventy-six, eighty thousand, give or take. Um, this change order's for three thirty. And so we've used up our ten, ten percent contingency essentially by doing the shot rock stabilization. So I'd say give or take about ten, ten percent over the original contract amount.
Over the original con, but over what we originally budgeted?
Yeah.
It's just a little.
Well, no, we originally, we're not over at all at this point right here.
Okay.
What we originally budgeted.
That's what I meant, out of what we originally budgeted, we're not over?
Not right now.
Okay.
Okay.
What was, what was our original budget?
Three, um, three million eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. We had that in the budget, but that had, that had the contingency built in with it.
So we're going to be just slightly over, we're going to be about fifty thousand over.
Well, yes, but we've added that Greenway trail work, so it.
Which was, was not part of the scope of our work.
You're talking about the additional Greenway work?
Yes.
Or the, the binder road stuff?
No, the, the part from Pioneer, or from Pioneer Trail that over up to South County, or County Club Drive that.
Okay, the eighty thousand dollar Greenway trail.
That was that part. Now, this other binder park, uh, work that's ongoing right now, and that amount extra on their end is about forty-five thousand, give or take.
But we got some too.
We, we have some in there too, yeah.
But we're still under?
We're under right now.
Fairly.
Probably go over a little bit, I mean, when it's all said and done, but we, we've added some things, uh, made some enhancements to the project through the process.
Well, and when we courted and everything, whenever you're doing your estimate, there's stuff you couldn't see, so.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
I still think you're doing a good job with it there.
It's got sign of mine.
This one's going to have been a lot worse if we didn't court.
Well, yeah, I, I hate to have a change order like this, but we're going to have a good product. It's, it's less than it could have been, I guess. You know, had we just gone with a blanket amount in the contract or whatever. We, we did some things to kind of keep it down. It could have been, you know, a lot more, five hundred thousand dollars instead of three hundred and thirty, potentially, so. Now, I think we've done well to keep it, keep it under control, all things considered. So we, we'd recommend approval of the change order.
So I just got a couple of questions. I don't really have a problem with the change order, but, um, they've gotten all the asphalt taken out, all the subgrades in?
All the subgrade stabilization is in, yes. We're waiting for.
Weather.
Decent weather to fit.
Okay.
Had a meeting yesterday with the contractor and if things go good, maybe by the end of the week or Saturday, lay the last round of black base. And then next week, or we may have to wait till December to get some good, decent temperature days to lay the final lift of asphalt. But we're still, we'll be, we'll be done before the end of the year.
Okay.
I mean, we'll, we'll meet the conditions of the contract for completion date.
Good.
And they're still working to be done ahead of time to get their bonus.
Get the bonus.
Yeah.
And so when we start talking about their bonus and substantial completion and stuff, does that include all the, that last section of Greenway? That big section of Greenway through there, or is that, are we just talking road?
It will not, it will not include the last part of Greenway Trail from Pioneer Trail down to South Liner Lake Road.
Okay.
What we did when we adjusted that stuff and we added all the other stuff for Parks and Rec, we took that part out to offset the additional work. And there's been a lot of other things added into and they have not asked for an extension on that date.
So, so basically the, the bonus is getting the road complete.
Yeah, everything, the whole job has to be complete except for the Greenway Trail from Pioneer down to South Liner Lake Road.
Okay.
And there, I don't, I think they'll, you know, if we get enough decent weather days, they'll, they'll get into, they'll get some bonus, I'm sure.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good. Entertain a motion to approve the change order.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second, call roll, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, roll call vote, change order's approved. Signing of SURF retirement election.
This is the annual election you guys do to get the vote on when you're going to cover that four percent. That's the cost for them, part of the cost for the certain retirement.
We've been covering it, right?
That's right.
Okay, then do you guys have any reason to not cover it for another year?
Nope. I'm good with it.
Nope.
Entertain a motion then to approve, uh, the election to pay the four percent.
Second.
Motion second. Sam, any comment?
No.
Good?
Good.
All right. Call roll, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
By roll call vote, that is approved. Sheriff leave? Yes? No, okay.
All right, let's talk about him.
Well, I'd asked him, I'd asked him to give us a quick update on the Ferguson situation, but.
Oh, well, he might have just stepped out.
Mike?
I've got one more thing to add if you're ready under, anything else to be brought forward. I brought Kevin with me to give you an update on the St. Mary's move. He was a task force leader on that for the past few months. And answer any questions if you have any reference to that. As you all saw in the press, it put various food, it did Kevin's hard work and coordination and sorry, bring him up to give you a brief on it and if you have any questions, you'd be glad to answer.
I don't have any questions, I just want to make a point that I did get some phone calls about whether we were being reimbursed for the move and we are, so. Jeff, if you want to make that very clear, uh, Mike and him had worked with St. Mary's and I think they had an agreement for a certain number of people and everything was ready to go.
Yep, Kevin's got, he's got specific numbers here, if you guys want those.
I'm not worried about them, just, I think, I didn't hear anything and I think that's good.
How many run shift, Mike?
Our service, there was four annual service, our service had eighteen patients.
Okay.
Minmo did five, Osage did four, and Abbott out of St. Louis did five. So thirty-two went by ambulance, the other twenty or so went by behavioral health.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing that. Thanks for helping out and good to have a new hospital, huh?
I stopped by today, they were doing a move and it was going smooth. That was kudos to Kevin and even coming up with some ideas and how to help speed up this, uh, situation, but, you know, just simple things like taking Lennon with them, uh, from the hospital bed they were in. Kept them from having to do additional work in ambulances. Both MoDOT and ourselves offered that they needed any help, you know, salt or anything, uh, everything went smooth. Like I said, I stopped by that day. Kudos to EMS.
We were actually done by ten or ten-thirty in the morning.
Oh, wow.
We had a planned road to move ninety patients and there was a empty house pretty well and we had fifty-two in house at that point, so. And then a couple walk-ins from the ER, so. But yes, as far as the reimbursement thing, we, we did that, we have a bill on that, we scheduled that. So I have numbers, we want them to be heard.
Nope, just had some people had called and mentioned it.
And.
Sometimes you have nothing better do than make sure commissioners are doing their job.
That was one of the first things we discussed before we even got into the news.
Have you got, have you got numbers?
What's that?
Have you got numbers?
Yeah, we've got numbers.
Okay, after, after you're done.
This has been like a six to eight month process that Kevin has took point in and the culmination of it was Sunday and as Larry said and everybody, this, this all right there, yeah, Kevin, and I just cannot stress enough that his leadership and his orchestration and having him there in the field overseeing and managing that, uh, to include our dispatch and, and other things like that. Just having that capability in a mobile setting like that, uh, is awesome. And Kevin did an outstanding job. I wanted to bring him up here and give you a read on that, so.
Thanks for doing that, Kevin, appreciate it. Thanks for all the service you guys do out there. Continue to get kudos from people about the service at EMS.
Yep, and we had the open house there with Thursday, so. You missed nice lunch, they had some nice.
They decided, they decided to schedule when I couldn't be there. They did that, they did that on purpose, they didn't want me there.
He doesn't eat that much, he wouldn't have to worry about it, but no, it's, it's real nice and makes perfect sense for shooting out in the front of there and all on the same level, so. And they were, they got a couple of them there watching babysit and make sure nobody's eating too much on the recliners and stuff, taking care of them. So please have fun with it.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys, appreciate it very much. Greg?
I prefer chili dogs, but in this weather. The Ferguson, less information that I've received on this is they're hopefully concluding the grand jury testimony, uh, this week at the latest, early next week. And then the, uh, decision should be forthcoming after that. So I, I personally think at the latest, it'll be next Wednesday, um, before Thanksgiving break. And it may be, it may be later this week. We should have twenty-four to forty-eight hours warning on it, so, don't know. There's a great deal of active intelligence out there about potential threats of how protesters would act, including, I note in the St. Louis Post Dispatch this morning, a list of places that people have said they're going to target in the St. Louis area. We're not in the St. Louis area, which is a wonderful thing. Uh, local law enforcement, uh, all stages of it, from local to federal in this area have had meetings together. And we have contingency plans, so we obviously don't discuss in open meetings. I think, uh, I, my hope is, is that there's going to be nothing that happens. I suspect that nothing's not the answer of what's going to be. We'll just have to wait and see what occurs. I know there's been calls for disruptions all across the United States of metropolitan areas. And I saw that one document that was found in Jackson County this morning that was put out by a, actually put out by a group that lists where they should show up and what they should bring with them. On a side note, there's some concerns that this could be the tool for lone wolf attacks from other places in the United States as well. Pulling other parts together. Any questions for me specifically on it?
No, no cognizable threats here in our county at this point?
No, we've, we've only, we've only had one unplanned, unnotified demonstration in Cole County. And that was early on, um, just post the visit by Eric Holder to St. Louis. And that was eight people not from Cole County that showed up at the federal courthouse. They spoke with the Assistant U.S. Attorney and left without any, without incident.
Okay.
Legitimate protest.
Thank you. Forgive us, I appreciate it. Ask any questions?
No, things ridiculous. Unless they're done peaceful demonstrations, that's fine.
We just need to be prepared. You never know what'll happen.
Yep.
What about the mutual aid and the drawing of our resources out?
Greg or myself?
Either one or the other.
EMS wise, we are literally other than the information I had sent to you a couple of weeks ago. Kevin as well is taking point on that and I'll let him comment as too specific on that.
As far as EMS goes, every region's putting together what's called an ambulance strike team, which consists of six ambulances in case local resources get overwhelmed in that area. Cole County, be part of one unit, um, with along five other counties in this region too. Just to say that, we'll get a, uh, a few hours notice if we are needed, um, as far as the exacts, I'm not sure what, how many twenty-four hour orders are for. It'll be for a forty-eight hour deployment and two twelve hour operation periods. It's a three-person crew and that's standard across the state, so it's every region's just getting prepared. And that's just for outside response, as far as going to another area.
Security on that? Are an issue with that? They'll provide it? Okay.
We, uh, there are certain things that we have to provide as far as our personal protective equipment, uh, those, the equipment that were issued plus body armor, which we're working with Sheriff's Department.
What unit will be, you be taking?
The oldest, yeah. I mean, obviously.
The one with steel reinforced with, and a turret on top. The one that we got surplus from the U.S. Army? We're just, we're going to, we're going to paint it a different color and put a.
We're trying to implement the newest equipment that we're including, we're going to send what we have available.
You have one that says Master 4077?
Yeah. So what you see flaming with the wheel of fire should be the oldest one, yeah.
That's what I would hope too.
Greg, anything about resources being diverted?
Outside of the St. Louis metropolitan area, which is that, that, what, about fifth county region, there have been no requests for outside service. Same concerns you had yesterday on the, uh, anticipatory emergency declaration, uh, but it's got no statutory authority to affect us.
Okay. Okay. It's going to be interesting. Wild ride for Thanksgiving and Christmas time.
They'll sell papers and.
Hey, if you got family, if you got family in St. Louis, there's an excuse to not go to Thanksgiving up there.
That's a bad excuse.
Your season's still open on Thanksgiving end.
All right. Debbie, you had one other item you wanted to bring up, was setting another meeting?
Yes, we're looking to look at that. I know we have our first budget meeting on December first and then we have a commission meeting that week on the fourth. But the next week, um, we actually have two budget meetings on the tenth and the eleventh, instead of messing those days up with an agenda. But the next week, um, we actually have two budget meetings on the 10th and the 11th. Instead of messing those days up with an agenda that week, then we open another day for an agenda that week.
I could do the 9th, um. I could do Tuesday the 9th.
Is there any, uh?
I don't care. When I, when I have to work, I, why do you not want to do it on them other days? You just think you're gonna get loaded up once we open up an agenda?
Right.
Well, we are actually here on the 10th and the 11th, um, as a budget.
Tell them getting older, isn't it?
That's why, that's what I'm saying, is we're already here on those days, why not just add to those or put limited agenda, and maybe we.
We could do the 9th, but we need to do it later. Um, we got a road and bridge advisory meeting that day.
Is that the drive, drive one?
Yep.
If the weather cooperates.
Cause I'm gonna try to make that.
See, I can't do that, cause it starts at 8:00 AM, so. I've got, I, I could do something after 9, I can't do anything before then, cause they're gonna be.
What do you have that you're wanting to put on there, Debbie?
I, I'm just anticipating with no meetings next week, and of course, already getting filled up, and then basically, the week after that is gonna be the last week that, um, all three of you guys would actually be here.
How long was that road trip gonna take?
Probably half a day.
And we can set aside an hour, hour and a half on the 10th before we get into budget discussions.
Well, right now, the 4, oh, wait, it's the 14th.
Cause you're here on the 10th and the 11th anyway, so we can, we can set an hour and a half.
I'm looking at December 4th.
Yes.
Unless I'm missing something, like my computer didn't update?
Four more to put on that we just.
All there is is a budget adjustment.
I've got four more.
Right, but I mean, that's not that big of an agenda.
We had a big agenda this morning, and we're done.
Yeah, I mean, it's 10 after 10.
Well, I mean, we're gonna keep talking for a while, but.
No, we're not.
We were done in hours.
I guarantee you.
I can do the 9th, after 9, but you guys can't, which means we'd have to do it in the afternoon and the 9th.
I'd say if you want to do it on the 9th, we'd have to do it at 1 o'clock.
I could do the 10th, I think we just carve it out of the budget meeting.
There's already one on the 10th.
There is.
I'll just carve it out on the 10th.
Look, we have, we have meeting the 10th and the 11th. We have budget meetings both days. Just, I, I'm fine with just using your discretion to put a couple of things here and there on those if you need them. If they're really big, long substantive things, then we'll have to figure out what we want to do, but if it's little stuff, I mean, you know, we can pop stuff in real quick.
We'll figure it out.
Is there, uh, this meeting on?
Load it down.
Meeting on the 4th?
Yes.
Is there, does that have to be on the 4th, or is everybody out, or it'll be on the 3rd, or?
Um, I cannot do the 3rd.
Okay.
I gotta be in the Supreme Court that morning.
It's fine.
We did have, we did have a meeting on the 3rd originally, but.
Okay, you had to move it.
Yeah, Supreme Court's had an argument, I gotta move it. Not allowed to.
And I just want to mention.
They don't view our schedule as superior to theirs.
They don't think so?
They do not think so.
I know we sent out six, six months with accounts payable because we were trying to coordinate our training schedule with this new software, BSN. Um, so we just tried to lay all that out, six months. Next year, if you three gentlemen would like to get together and set every Tuesday or every Wednesday morning for commission meetings, uh, that would work better with all of us, so at least we know when you're gonna be here and what day, and we will schedule everything to that effect. So, it's up to you three if, if that was.
I find, we used to do that, and I, actually, I think, we used to, and then you had some actual meetings that were conflicting with them, so we tried to change it, but then we said, you know, let's just do it whenever we can.
We did go through this year and pick, we tried to set them pretty far out, we picked a whole bunch of them, but, you know, my schedule was just such that Mondays, we used to meet Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we would come in here, this before you, I, I made him change it before you got here. We used to meet Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and we'd have days, we had nothing on the agenda, but we still had a meeting. Cause we scheduled Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So, we, I think we've come down to the point where basically, we really have enough business to do one meeting a week. Once in a blue, once in a blue moon, we get enough, we have to go twice.
We can talk about that, Debbie, whenever. I don't, you just tell me what you.
I'm, I'm good with the Tuesday or Wednesday, and, um, so whatever works for Jeff and Sam, so.
So no Mondays?
Well, I mean, if we're gonna set a day, Mondays are not a good day to have a meeting, but.
Put out, give that notice, we don't have it by Friday at 9 o'clock, so, so Monday's usually not a good day.
How many notices do you get on Saturday and Sunday that you want on the agenda?
Well, you don't usually know by 9 o'clock on Friday.
You don't need to know by 9 o'clock on Friday.
9 o'clock on Sunday.
It's 9 o'clock on Sunday.
Here we go. Here we go.
The law says 24 hours notice. It doesn't say one business day. It doesn't.
No, it says 24 hours.
It's just 24 hours, and 24 hours is 9:00 AM Friday or Sunday morning? Jill says it's a business day?
I was gonna say, I think Mr. Watson would have a suggestion too.
Let's make sure we do it on Mondays.
Let's, oh, just tell me when you're gonna do the first one, so that I can come over to watch it, that'll be fun, I might have a good time.
24 hour notice, yeah.
Just shoot me an email Sunday at evening, say that, it might be some fun tomorrow morning, and maybe you can have Bob show up.
I'm gonna have Bob show up, yeah.
So we could, we could all add all kinds of stuff on the agenda on Sunday morning, early.
I'm just saying, there's some months, or some Wednesdays, that we have pre-scheduled meetings, like the second or third Wednesday, so I just would have to work around that one.
And Sam, you'll have.
Third Wednesday, I can.
Um, the last Tuesday of every month, you'll have, uh, chamber board meet, directors meeting.
I don't care if we pick Wednesday.
So there will be some days where there's, which you can still make to, they go to 9.
Yeah, they will, yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, so, you just can't do it earlier.
I was at the downtown meeting this morning.
Sam, if you get figured out on how the computer works and stuff, and have your phone works on there, it will be on that calendar, and well, you can see to not schedule something at them times.
You need one of these.
I do do that to.
Sorry, sorry to tell you that. You're gonna need one.
If none else, have her show you how to put it on the computer, cause if you put on the Outlook computer, or calendar there, then she sees it, and she'll make every attempt to not schedule at the same time as, you know, some other meeting or something, so. It works out good, or if you find some, we can reschedule it.
Anything else coming before, uh, cheese, what, Larry?
Just FYI, for your, it's a long ways off yet, but we were informed Thursday night, Chiefs meeting, that MODOTX will be closing, uh, the southbound bridge on 54 in 2016. And it will be closed over Memorial Day weekend, the way it sounds right now. Uh, they're gonna put two lanes, both directions on the other bridge, and have it striped, so, and that's gonna be at the same time we're working on Lafayette.
Sounds like fun!
Four months it's gonna be closed to paint the southbound bridge, so.
So.
Don't, don't be planning on going north.
Other things that irritate me.
Remind us when it's.
Road closings. So paint handling's not legal in Jeff City.
I don't know.
I just read an article on Columbia article.
I don't know.
That says it is there, but it's not here, but they do it all the time.
Yeah.
So, if they want to, they could go out to Route M and panhandle if they wanted to. There's nothing illegal about it. Just sit there and.
Do you guys want to put that on the agenda?
Beg for money? I don't know, those things just bother me.
Panhandling in Cole County.
Hey Debbie, put this on the agenda for next time.
Is it legal in the city? Uh, Jeff?
I don't think we have authority to.
I can enforce it.
I don't think we have any, I don't think we have any authority to issue an ordinance to ban panhandling.
I'm just curious if I see somebody panhandling at, uh, the Taz exit or 179 down there.
You're free to give money to him if you want to.
No, I ain't giving no money. I just want them to leave. I think it's ugly.
I agree.
So.
Anything else coming forward, Commission? Entertain motion to stand in recess.
So moved.
All is fair to say, aye, aye, posed, motion carries, will stand in recess. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Merry Thanksgiving.
Sam, thank you, sir, very much.
Uh, just to discuss it around, not that we're gonna do anything.
We were at the 7:00 AM, we had some breakfast, we were going out there by.
It's easier, don't tell.
About 8:30, and they're already taking the signs down, I'm like, man, this is, uh, but, well, you know, it's still gonna be confusing for some people. But people are still gonna go to that old, the old hospital for a long time.
They have some barricades or fences that they're gonna be getting parked.
So what do we do?
Well, yeah, cause it was parked there. We got.
I think that's perfect.
I saw that in your email, and I.
I didn't want to put that in there, but, you know, they were like, you're the only kind of smartest person I've ever met.
Well, you didn't have that in email? I thought you put that in the email, that he swiped it in front of the FaceTime.
I, all I'll tell you is.
Actually, I got an extra.
I will trust in what you're doing, because you know what you're doing, and I don't.
Yeah, I just felt like it was unnecessary, and it would have cost a lot of harm. Here, Jeff, I got an extra.
They, somebody figured it out. Well, I'll tell you that my personal two cents on how we've tried, I think the three of us have tried, and I don't know that Sam would do any differences. You guys are experts in what you do. I mean, you come to us for resources, we pretty much want you to do your job.
No, I, I, I'm in various, I went over.
She's a rock star.
Oh, I know, well, all of her people are.
And she's, and she's.
I'll tell you what, we gotta get the gear, we gotta get part of St. Mary's.